Motion in second, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Move the law on rank. Brubaker Land Development 2024-01 Plan Recommendation.
All right, I worked it up. Mr. Mr. Mason. Basically.
Your name?
John Schur.
Welcome.
The plan, the plan that we have is, is a lot add-on that is in both East Calico and Breckinaw Township. The add-on part is in Breckinaw Township and it involves adding tract one of the plan to Rodney, or from Rodney Brubacher, Brubaker property to Terry Rank property. It also will close an easement that comes from Steffi Road to the, to the Brubaker property. And to compensate for that, there was an easement that was gained from the group, actually Rodney's father property, from Chesapeake Hill Road that gave him access to his property. And that's the location that's cleared out and where he hopes, I think, to build a house. I don't know if he's got an armit or not, but like we're hearing, in the township to, to do so. So the plan is simple. We're basically adding that Breckinaw Township, I guess, be the controlling approval of power. Again, you would be signing plans approving this, this lot add-on. I don't know if you want to.
Yeah, and that's just a supplement that Planning Commission did talk about this. There is a recommendation, a memo for the board to waive the final plan review in East Calico and defer the final plan approval to Breckinaw Township. They have actually already done that. They did that last week, give additional approval in Breckinaw Township. I did a review letter for both East Calico and Breckinaw, so as part of your motion to just meet all the Technicon comments in our letter and then it would come back to you for signatures.
Technicon, these are your township engineers, Breckinaw townspeople.
That is correct. A little unique situation on that, and it doesn't always happen.
Worth three bucks.
Yeah. And in the future, just so the board's aware, if there's any house construction development on the lot in East Calico, they have to come back in for a stormwater management plan. That would have to be approved by the board as well.
Yeah, in fact, in fact, in order to plan the easement to that property, we do have a, we did acquire driveway permit from the township where remaining improvements would have to be approved by the township before the construction, so.
Right.
I mean, it's pretty straightforward with your letter and everything.
It is.
Any questions? I'll make a motion to waive final plan requirements for Rank Brubaker Land Development 2024-01, a lot line change at Steffi Road, Breckinaw Township, and to defer final plan approval to Breckinaw Township, conditioned upon the applicant satisfying all comments in the Technicon enterprising second review letter dated January 25th, 2024. Excuse me, sorry. Motion in second, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Denver Road Partners LLC rezoning 2024-01. Is there anything that can order petition for a manager?
Good evening, Plody Shankman, Keith Wolf, and Merrick. Andy Miller here on behalf of the applicant, Denver Road Partners. We did make a presentation to the board at your last meeting about our proposed rezoning and tax amendment that would rezone a portion of the property that Denver Road Partners has under contract to light industrial, retaining the balance of the tract for residential development. The property that we are referring to here consists of three tracts of land, which are south of the Hood Pike and north of Denver Road. We do have copies of the plan that we shared in the last meeting. If anyone would like to see those again. I don't want to go through all of the details of the tax amendment since you heard that at the last meeting, although I'm certainly happy to if you would like. We're just before you this evening asking you to accept the petition that we have submitted to stay up and to refer it to your township and the county planning commissions for review and comment prior to scheduling a hearing on the matter. The only thing that we will potentially seek to change about the petition since the prior hearing would be to increase the density that would be available on this site. We had previously conducted 12 units per acre. I know your chairman had indicated a desire for higher density and we're exploring the possibility of that. So if we were to reflect a 15 unit per acre maximum density, I think that would allow us the flexibility that we can get higher density on the site to do that. But other than that, the petition, we're bringing unchanged from what we previously submitted and presented to you. Happy to answer any questions.
What does that density do to the parking department, so?
Would not change them, and that's going to be our challenge.
Create more, that creates more imperious?
It does. We have proposed parking amendment is that proposal to allow 1.5 spaces per unit. So that is the challenge we talked about at the last meeting, providing additional units is dealing with the parking. So we're still exploring that and we'll continue to do that, but we figured at least that would then give us the flexibility if we are able to find a way to accommodate the additional units that we can do it, you know, if we aren't, which is all below the threshold.
Looking at parking requirements is something that municipalities are doing these days for two reasons. One, in order to progress design with higher densities, but also to address the stormwater management. Do we need as many parking spaces as are required is the question because of the benefits to coming up with a better history. Some places are, anybody who's actually adopted it yet, but some places are even considering taking parking requirements out of the zoning permits completely and putting the burden on the applicant at land development to demonstrate what needs.
Would that vary on the?
Property of the suburbs, yeah. You know, a, an age restricted income qualified property, I can tell you that the actual census on those properties, two parking spaces per unit is way more than what's needed.
It's actually the same to East Townville Township, yeah.
Did any of you guys still do it?
Yeah, yeah, they have a, they have a threshold now where basically you provide to them your need and how you come up with your need, and then they want it couched by the I T E. They want to make sure that you're, you're using the I T E as a, you know, a test basically to make sure that it falls within something that's reasonable. The other thing they're taking is parking studies. Actually, there's a lot of municipalities now that have taken, you know, actual live parking studies that we've done for apartment buildings to count overnight. We go out, we have our engineer count the number of vehicles in the, in the parking lots, you know, between 2:00 and 4:00 a.m., I think it is, to get an actual live count of what's actually being used.
Fuck Peter.
Hey, that's what we pay him for, yep.
Lots of coffee and donuts, I guess.
What is I T E sale? Institute of Transportation Engineers.
It's a, it, it, it assembles a lot of data for a lot of different uses and gives you an average of the expected traffic.
Right.
Mr. Miller, you talked in the past about the stream bank restoration project.
Yes.
As it relates to the stormwater needs of this project, how, maybe I didn't hear you be correct, but is there, is there more proposed stormwater facilities here than just that, that restoration project?
No, what we've, what we found with our preliminary information and testing, what we had our consulting go out and do in that floodplain area, is that we still have a little bit more testing to do, obviously, which will lead forward. But our hope is that we could use the whole floodplain restoration area and that restoration project to handle our rate, volume, and quality for, for stormwater purposes. So we are not proposing any other, as long as our results are favorable, which we think they will be, then we won't have any other surface basins or underground stormwater basins or anything else on the site.
The, the concept would be to get the water into the stream and away before the flood waters.
Yeah.
It wouldn't be detaining.
Correct, and by removing all the legacy sediment and restoring that whole floodplain area, it is a much larger, wider area for all the stormwater to infiltrate than right now, which is kind of a meandering, arid stream with a floodplain area that is so sediment clogged, nothing can really underground. So I know I spoke about that at the last meeting there, you know, we'd be happy to educate the township more on that, but there's, there's been a handful of projects here in East Calico that have utilized that and, and have been very successful at managing floodwaters throughout the floodplain area and then are also preparing for the stormwater B M Ps.
Who's your consultant?
Uh, Breeze and Land Studies. And Land Studies has really been at the forefront of it with the, the. And, and to note too, we don't have it calculated yet, but many times there's remaining volume there that the township can use for their announced or credits and so on. So there's always some extra benefit there above and beyond what our D P is.
The balance of that is that if you don't have to build a detention base, then the developer has been for, for years. So it's worth the investment.
It, and, and to be very honest and candid with you, it's not a cost savings measure at all. Typically, the floodplain restoration project through the design, permitting, and installation of all that is usually a wash between having to sell all the other B M Ps. But from a long-term maintenance and then from a, you know, effectiveness, effectiveness of that floodplain, it, it will have no benefits.
Call me skeptical, but when you're looking at taking six to seven acres of grass out to create permanent surface, I don't, you know, it's hard to rationalize how this restoration project can function for that purpose of capturing and saving that kind of stormwater.
And, and I'll, someday you're driving around and it's a beautiful day, not cold maybe like today, maybe in two weeks.
He's a farmer, he is a.
Okay. The, uh, so by the Penn State Health Hospital in East Templefield Township, along the Ridge Overstate Road, there's a huge floodplain restoration project that was done that handles all the stormwater management from the Penn State campus. That's a project that was part of previously. And then over on Boerish Town Road, the Limespring Square Development has a huge floodplain restoration project down through there. Limespring was one of the first ones that was done in the county and the E P keeps going back to it as an award. Yes.
It's startling, but it, it works.
But believe me, the E P will check our path.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
It's a very demanding project.
It would be easier to do underground stormwater basements, basins, or surface basins and, and walk away. It, it would be a lot easier, but we see the value and we have the land. And not every floodplain is a suitable candidate for a restoration project. We have another project that has a large floodplain area through, it's very deep, it's, it's, you know, not a nice wide floodplain area that can be restored. The channel is, is deep and scoured and the, the piracy doesn't lend itself to it, so we're not going to go on that project because it doesn't, we don't get any benefit out of it.
But the maintenance of underground storage and all of the expenses, et cetera, avoiding that is a benefit.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You've addressed the wellhead that Chairman spoke about last.
So I need, we, admittedly, I made some notes about that. We need to look into that. It looks like the ordinance has, from just what I was looking, if I looked at the right number, 100 foot offset, and actually from that wellhouse, roughly around my door, the property line is 100 foot. So obviously, you know, outside our property, we wouldn't be closer to that wellhouse, but we'll, we'll run that down and we'll look into that, have you to note that.
One of the questions that wasn't explored in the last meeting was you have future, I guess it's identified as future flood facilities along Denver Road, the Denver Road side of the, the Cree County Restoration Area. What's, what's the thought process there, I guess?
So the area between the floodplain restoration, between the floodplain area and Denver Road, we actually have that as a burn area in both areas that we've got plannings on it. So we're not proposing any development in those areas. It's just a long skinny area and access to build anything off Denver Road wouldn't be sufficient. So our intent is there's going to be some sediment and some material coming out of that floodplain that can't be reused. So that material we would stockpile there, create a burn, put plannings on it as kind of an additional, you know, buffer screen measure.
Would that be a part of that, maybe be a possible site for recreation area or is this not a?
My concern with the recreation area would be the way the slope drops off from the road down into the floodplain area and where you would safely put a driveway along that section of Denver Road, just the way the curvature of the roadway is and site distance. I'm not sure if you would have enough room there to do any kind of recreation, but.
The last meeting, Mr. Miller, you had mentioned about, you guys are interested in the light industrial part of it, for a sec. My question is, all right, I understand it doesn't pencil to, you know, for doing it all residential. You guys get the warehouse in, what guarantee does the township have that we're going to get the high density in? Obviously, obviously, we know place is 2040, that they're asking us to try to get this and there's, there's a need there. You got, you had said that you guys are probably most likely going to not own that park, do you guys stick with light industrial?
Correct.
So rezoning this whole thing to R1 and light industrial, what guarantees the township really going to get, especially if like there's no infrastructure and it just looks just like a piece of land like it does now?
Yeah, so the underlying landowner has a, he wants to develop that side of it. We know it doesn't make sense for industrial. So the only way that, that development of that side, doing the floodplain restoration, crossing the floodplain with the bridge, the, the only way to make that work is by doing some type of density. So that's where the multifamily, you know, apartment buildings come into play. It's not an area we would build single family or anything like that, it's just not large enough, you can't make the numbers work.
Well, my question, my question would be, how are we guaranteed we're even going to get high density there and it's just not going to be land? I'm not talking single family.
I mean, I don't think there's a mechanism for us to guarantee exactly what we're going to build through the rezoning process. I think getting it all zoned correctly sets us up to, to do that and our partner that owns the land, you know, obviously wants to develop it. So I don't think I can stand here and maybe 100% guarantee we're going to build exactly what's on our plan from a, a density unit that might be a little less depending on cost and, and parking and other things that we, we hashed through here. But I, we're, we're not townhouse builders, we're not going to build a single family over there. It's going to have to be something that has some density to it.
Do you expect that with your partner's developer of the residential portion, that a single plan would be coming forward showing both?
Yeah, so I think what we would do is we would come through with a two-phase plan. First phase be the industrial and then that could be, you know, we, we would probably N P D S permit the entire site, do the, because the floodplain restoration.
Because all of your, all of your services are integrated.
Correct. So we would do, we would do the N P D S for the entire site, floodplain restoration, which would encompass the entire site. Then we would do the warehouse in phase one, that would allow that to get, you know, bonded, posted, get it under construction, do a phase two for the apartment buildings. You know, we might go a phase two on the south side and phase three on the other side just to break up the escrows and the, the amount of bonding and so forth on that. You know, so I think it's going to be a multi-phase plan, it, it just makes sense.
Typically, you would not build all of the apartment buildings that one's.
No, no, and even within that.
You would move through the site.
That's correct, yeah, and even within on the north side, we have six buildings, let's say, you're going to build the first two, you know, hope that they start to get occupied, use that cash for your next two, and you know, that's how the apartment.
What, when would you expect a preliminary plan for the entire site with that phases?
Correct, yep. And part of that, and, and we, on another project with the floodplain restoration, we did that again with the floodplain restoration and the N P D S, so that it's all permitted design for that upfront, then we can come through with our final phase plans.
Not to digest. I don't want this to turn into another spur rude. Everyone thought Johnny Lou's was coming in and it never did.
They won't fill this parcel.
Well, I'm.
They wanted the Giants.
I'm, I'm, I'm just saying, you'll see another warehouse, but we're not going to see what we really, the high density, that, that's, that's where I was going.
Yeah, we're excited that you want density. Most, most folks have beaten us down on that, so we're.
If you'd be proposing it the other way around, I'd be all in favor right now, but it's a lot to digest because what if the warehouse goes up and the house is never doing? That's the big question, Mike.
You, you made a statement earlier, the key is the, the warehouse for your project and it makes me wonder a little bit, I guess maybe for what Lorenzo's saying, well, does that become a lower priority if it doesn't happen?
I mean, there's still, don't get me wrong, there's still money to be made on the apartment side of it. It's just the, the way the industrial market is right now and especially for the size of the building, that's really the first to help unlock value in the land, but then the higher density of the apartment creates value on that side, so it makes sense to want to go and unlock that down road as well.
So some of the questions that I'm hearing being asked in other municipalities, I mean, we know what the market demand for high density multifamily housing is, we don't see that changing. What would have to happen for the market in the warehouse space to change?
So what we would have to see in the market is we would use our, our brokers and stuff that help us with these projects, tell us, you know, before, a lot goes in before you break ground, one of these, as you can imagine. But the first would be is there's plenty of availability out there, you know, there's plenty of available space in this market, in this location, you know, proximity to term, like different things like that. If you're starting to see a lot of space become available and, or, or space sitting available that is newly built, not leased up, that would be a clear indicator that we would not, you know, run forward and build a warehouse right away. We have warehouse projects, surprisingly, on the outer skirts of Lehigh Valley that we have traditionally approved, ready to go. We're not building the building until we get, you know.
We don't have a tenant.
Right, we don't have a tenant for that one yet. But that's a different space out there than what we're seeing around here. Our Stoney Battery Road project, nobody wanted to even look at it until the building was under complete and then it gained a ton of interest after the building was completed. So it's just, the markets are so different, we rely on our brokers to give us that intel.
But that's true for industrial space everywhere, unless you're building the industrial building for your own use, nobody wants to look at it until it's under construction.
Right, yeah, because even then they're not wanting out from being able to be in it, you know, but at this point, again, people don't even want to talk to us about it because it's not real to them at all, you don't have approvals or anything like that. So it's, it's a very different model of the industrial model.
But you could get tenants on the waiting list for an apartment.
Or a mortgage. We have projects, we don't have zone to crack away at it, we have apartment codes that want to be on, so we, you know.
You guys got any? I guess it's kind of what you did with C B. We can push it on and see what the, our planning commission and the county decide, give a recommendation or not, and we'll add our say later. And the residents as well. I'll make a motion to accept and refer out for reviews of petition to rezon properties at Denver Road and to revise certain portions of the township code as submitted by Denver Road Partners LLC, rezoning 2024-01.
Aye.
Motion in second, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much, appreciate the time. Good evening, what's for the work?
Move the law on 1405 South Wind Creek Security Release.
Yeah, so that's, that's a catalyst land development, that's 425 South Wind Creek Road, the release request that's before you, recommendation is in the amount of $223,945.31. We are withholding $4,950 of the as-built plan and the note of termination of the N P D S, term which is forthcoming. Any questions related to improvement? This is primarily pertaining to stormwater management landscaping and erosion setting control.
Not for me, pretty straightforward, yeah. I'll make a motion to approve the release and park a security process for various improvements made at 425 South Wind Creek Road in the amount of $223,945.31.
I'll second that.
Motion in second, all in favor? Aye. Motion carries.
Next, for me, it's the 20 Brunner's Grove Road. This is an existing lot of record that's proposed for civil family dwelling construction similar to Lot 3, which was constructed last year. This is for action on the improvement guarantee agreement and also the stormwater management agreement with the posting of financial security as part of that project. The amount of that is $21,406 that's being secured for the improvements. Any questions? And there's a required pre-construction meeting, this, they have been advised not to start without contacting the township engineer.
Any erosion that's occurring will be addressed.
Yes.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to execute an improvement guarantee agreement and a stormwater management and easement agreement for certain improvements to be installed at 20 Brunner's Grove Road.
Second.
Motion in second, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. That all for you, Mark?
That's all I have, yeah. Thank you, gentlemen.
2024 Road Program, bid award to Comming.
The township left for bid its 2024 Road Program. The program includes improvements to be made to Black Forest Road, Crystal Road, and Olston Road, in specific portions widening and the reestablishment of the grounds and paving, also some roadside swale branding work in the installation of approximately 800 meter feet of garden. Bids were opened on Tuesday, the board may recall the township has bid $650,000 for this year's program. The little bid received were approximately $578,000. And that encompasses a base bid and the alternate bid. And then the township has recommended the award of bid to Brubacher Construction, the lowest responsive and responsible bidder in that amount of $578,604.50.
Questions there?
I guess I saw where Mike Nuss for, for two was part of that bid process, too.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to award the base and alternate bids for the 2024 Road Program to Brubacher Escalade 8, Beaumont, Pennsylvania, the lowest responsive and responsible bidder in the amount of $578,604.50.
Second.
Motion in second, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Georgetown Pool, 2024, reached.
Since the season before the board this evening, pool rates for the coming year, as noted, the township is looking to align its rate structure with that of our neighbor. Board recalls, the township does have a shared pool pass with Denver Borough, as we did last year, rates for the shared pool passes in.
last year, rates for the shared pool passes in Bowman's Palace, the same, we've been looking to align the balance of rates to match Denver. Any questions there?
I guess there's small increases in just about every category, and that's what I noticed.
Yes.
Okay, ever from five to eight percent. Yeah.
Although we did get a better rate from the rec board.
At for the rec center?
Yeah, the rec board, at for the rec center, the cost of supplies and stuff is still up, so I, I think it makes sense to be aligned with them. Got anything there?
I do not on this one. Appreciate your point.
I'll make a motion.
Close a question.
We'll take questions at the end.
No, I wouldn't, no, it's too late then. It's too late.
You had an opportunity to ask questions on the agenda.
I'm going to ask it now, all right? Jeff, you don't, you better look at your numbers. The numbers, student rates went of anywhere from eight and a half to 35% increase. Senior citizens increased anywhere between 15 and 35%. And Calico's swim teach students went anywhere from 12 to 20%. Now you do the math, I'll show it to you here. So, when you sit up there and say, we had a modest increase of three to five percent, you're not being truthful about it, you're not being transparent, you're not even close. The average was 3.5 to 6.7. All right, we're moving on. Put that in the paper, Larry.
Moving on. Please, next time, express that at the beginning of the meeting when we say.
I don't know what you're going to talk about.
Well, don't interrupt me, thank you.
Sure.
I'll make a motion to approve rates for the Reapstown Pool for the 2024 season as presented.
I will second that.
Motion is second, all in favor, aye? Motion carries. All our license agreement.
There's a new waste hauler in town, and when we noted this, we reached out to these folks, explained our licensing requirement under Act 101, and they have forwarded to us a completed application, listed property served, and a certificate of insurance, that means the township adds an additional insurer that allows the board to act on the order of license this evening, which would provide for the service to be offered to the township through the end of this year.
Any questions there? I'll make a motion to execute a license agreement with B and L Carson Disposal Service LLC for the balance of collection year 2024.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor, aye? Motion carries. Stevens Fire Company, Pool Road.
Stevens Fire Company has asked for the board supervisor's approval for the toll road event to take place on Saturday, April 6th, from 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m.
Pretty straightforward, just like all your fire companies. I'll make a motion to approve a toll road event to be conducted by Stevens Fire Company on Saturday, April 6th, from 8:00, 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., weather permitting.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Ratification Public Works Laborer.
The township has made an offer of employment to a full-time Public Works Laborer and seeking board ratification of the hire.
Any questions there, gentlemen? I will make a motion to ratify the hire of Clayton Frable, Public Works Laborer, subject to the terms set forth in a conditional offer of employment dated March 11th, 2024.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Letter P, appointment of deputy tax collector, that is going to be tabled to a future meeting, the tax collector wanted that to be tabled. Appointment of the zoning hearing board? You got that one, tell me.
Two candidates who expressed an interest in the appointment to the zoning hearing board, it is the alternate member position to fill the balance of a term to expire on December 31st, 2026.
I'll make a motion to appoint Kim Shoup to the zoning hearing board, alternate member, for the balance of a three-year term to expire on December 31st, 2026.
I will second that.
Motion is second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next, the appointment of a member to the recreation board, we had one person express interest in this position, this is also to fill the term that would expire at the end of 2026.
Yeah, that gentleman was there at the last meeting at Stevens, he was here earlier. I'll make a motion to approve the appointment of Zebulon Rimey, a recreation board member for the balance of a five-year term to expire on December 31st, 2026.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Motion carries, Trezor's report.
Okay, list of bills to meet. We have general fund bank account list of bills in the amount of $75,160.69 for the week of March 8th of 2024, and general fund bank account list of bills of $9,401.98 for the week of March 14th of 2024. And the questions there? Seeing none, I make a motion to approve. I'll second that. Motion is second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, and we have a street life fund list of bills in the amount of $14,792.97 for the week of March 14th of 2024. Any questions there? Seeing none, I make a motion to approve.
I'll second that, motion is second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, and we have a capital reserve fund list of bills in the amount of $3,103.91 for the week of March 8th, 2024. Any questions there?
Question, yeah?
Yes.
Rental barriers for $3,000, is that more?
Yeah.
And how long is that rent, is that a month over a year, or what is it?
No, I, I think that was.
It's a six-month rental, and.
That'll be insurance claim.
It'll be insurance claim for the person who did it.
Right. Okay.
Thank you, we should get a return on that. Any others? Seeing none, I make a motion to approve.
I'll second that, motion is second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And we have an electronics payment list of bills for the pay period of February 25th of 2024 to March 9th of 2024, in the amount of $89,652.51. I make a motion to approve.
I'll second that, motion is second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Department reports, chief.
Thank you.
Are you still awake?
Yes. The chief's report for the month of February 2024. Officers investigated a hit-and-run crash that occurred in the 100 block of South Reapstown Road on February 13th. Stratus program was operating the pickup truck, pouring a trailer, hauling a telehandler. He struck the bridge, dislodging the trailer and telehandler for blocking the road. The operator fled in the pickup truck. The bridge sustained severe damage and will need further repair. The identity of the driver was discovered during the investigation, and the following charges were filed. Criminal mischief, accident is causing damage to unattended property, reckless driving, failure to notify police of accident, and disregard of traffic law. During the month of February, officers located two male subjects that had outstanding arrest warrants, we took them into custody and turned them over to the issuing authorities. During the month of February, our department conducted a week-long speed study in the first block of Main Street, Denver Borough. The average speed recorded was 30.8 miles an hour, but the highest speed recorded is 71, and this is a 25 mile per hour zone. That 71 was recorded at 11 o'clock in the night. We conducted another speed study in the 500 block of South Fourth Street, Denver Borough. The average speed recorded was 29.7 miles per hour, the highest speed recorded at 50. Again, this is the posted 25 mile per hour zone. We conducted several speed enforcement details, we conducted three of them in Denver Borough, two of them were in the 200, two separate ones were in the 200 block of East Leinster Avenue, the other one was on North Sixth Street, in the 700 block of North Sixth Street. During those three speed enforcement details, a total of 35 citations were issued for speeding violations. Our department conducted four speed enforcement details in East Calico Township. One was in the 200 block of Hill Road, one was in the 400 block of Ponce Town Road, another was in the 200 block of Mark Reapstown Road, and one was in the 200 block of West Swartzville Road, which is 897. During those four speed enforcement details, a total of 46 citations were issued for speeding violations. On February 5th, the Leinster County District Attorney's Office and Chief of Appeals and Legal Services, Andy Gonzalez, provided in-house training to all of our staff, all of our officers, the training pertaining vehicular search and seizure case law. That was invaluable, having assistant district attorney right there at our fingertips, so we could just, our officers could get clarification on the new case law, so that was very, that was very good training. During the month of February, our department donated a brand-new child safety seat to a qualified parent. Again, Officer Odenwald is a Safe Kids Certified Child Seat Technician, and she installed that seat for each other. For the month of February, East Calico Township, we responded to 512 calls for service. We responded to a total of 129 calls for service during the month of February for Denver Borough. That concludes my report.
Great, chief. Why it's called the words, truly, new business, any more guidance for new business? We've got our whole business, so I don't got anything to you? You?
We heard a little bit about it tonight. I discussed last meeting about looking at our overall map of zoning, some of the things we heard tonight were some of our foundational facets of being a township, and that's maintaining our agriculture. So, as I was looking at the maps and having conversations with different folks within our township, there were, Jeff asked me specifically if I had parcels that I was speaking of last time, I did not, but now I have specifics, and I, you know, I'd like to bring in before the board my thoughts on possibly rezoning two specific parcels in Stevens, as we heard testimony this evening, that that's our, our township's best agriculture plots of land and farming. And looking at some of these places and some of the current zoning, currently, some of that best, our best farmland in our township is zoned light industrial, I'd like to pursue further thoughts, looking at rezoning that, those particular two plots up there in Stevens. So, basically what I'm saying is, you know, with your interest, with your combined interests, we can pursue further, looking at ordinance, an ordinance hearing with regards to some rezoning out in that, in those two specific segments in Stevens.
So, under the M P C, there's two ways to start a rezoning process. The one that you're most familiar with is where a property owner petitions the township and asks you to consider rezoning that property owner's property specifically, et cetera. The other is that the planning commission can initiate a process and make a recommendation to the board on certain properties. And the first process, you refer to the planning commission, the second process, the planning commission initiates it. But the planning commission can't do anything unless you ask them to do it. So, really, Dan, what you're suggesting is that the township board considers is asking the planning commission to look into these properties.
Here's, here's my problem with that idea, straight out. Honestly, if some property rights advocate, and when you do it by request of a property owner, you know, you, you have the ability then to say yea or nay. When you do it without the request of a property owner, you know, you're, you're basically going against what their thoughts could be or, or might be, and, you know, I, that doesn't quite line up with, with my, my thought process. You know, when, when you have a landlair involved, and they, they step up to the plate and make some solid recommendations about where, where they see different parts of the township going, well then, that comes back to us to, and the planning commission to help, you know, put some theory to all that. So, you know, I, I don't know that I'm looking to walk out and tell somebody, you know, this, this needs to be rezoned without, you know, some solid background. I, I question, you know, even if the planning commission wouldn't need some, some kind of solid direction on that.
Well, they would have.
From some land planning.
They would have the, the township consultants available, they would need to bring the property owner into the conversation, that sort of thing. And again, it may never come back to this board because they take property owners' concerns to heart, et cetera, but your, your comments are not inappropriate, but the, the process does allow for those to be a part of.
So, so defer into the planning commission, there's really no commitment, it's just a conversation to be had?
Correct.
You would probably, probably be spending money on consultants.
Which, because this wasn't on the agenda, is something that you might think about until the April meeting, and have it listed on your old business for consideration of action to submit to the planning mission.
And, like I said, I'm the new guy, so I'm trying to figure this out. I represent the entire township, I'm looking at, I'm looking at a zoning map, you know, to, to kind of counter Jeff's argument, you know, a property owner comes in and requests specific use of his property, and we deny or accept it based on what's best for the township. When I'm looking at specific properties across our township, I don't know how, you know, this is, I, I don't know the backstory of, you know, these specific plots, why they were zoned light industrial in the first place, I, you know, I, if there were plans moved forward to, to make that a warehouse or whatever out there, I don't think the township has the infrastructure to handle that. So, I'm looking at it from many different levels of, okay, what makes sense, what's best for the township, what's best for, you know, obviously, I'm a property rights. best for the township, what's best for, you know, obviously, I'm a property rights advocate as well, I'm not sure how the township felt that was the best move back whenever that was originally done, but I'm just, you know, again, I hear a lot of folks within the township saying, we don't need more warehouses, now we just voted on another zoning to light industrial, common sense, we show you that it's surrounded there, but right now, we have our best fertile ground in East Cocalica Township that is zoned light industrial, and the infrastructure can't handle it, so that is why I'm proposing, at least looking at that. And so from my understanding, Matt, correct me if I'm wrong, if I were to bring something like that toward, to the board, and then give it to the, to the planning commission to review for thirty days, then we can look forward that way, but I, I don't know.
So, so you're not wrong, it's everything that you do on the land planning side of your responsibilities is supposed to track back to the township comprehensive plan. And that's why all of these requests, whether it's for rezoning, subdivision, land development, get referred to the planning commission, because the planning commission is the entity where comprehensive planning starts. The MPC says that that's their mandatory responsibility, and you may send other things to them, but they are responsible for creating the comprehensive plan for the township. So, everything that you send to them is an opportunity for them to look at the plan, look at the proposal in relation to the plan, and consider whether the plan is still a viable and appropriate plan these many years later after it's been adopted, or whether it requires some amendment, because you can always rezone a property, whether it is consistent with the comprehensive plan or not, but if you rezone a property, that, that rezoning is not consistent with the comprehensive plan, you're supposed to also amend the comprehensive plan to bring the plan into line with your actions. So, that's where these questions go, that's where these requests go. If you think that, 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 that the current zoning in a certain part of the township is out of line with wherever the, the township as a whole is on current thinking, the planning commission is supposed to be your agency to, to suss all that out for you. Together with, you know, the necessary consultants. Now, you know, we, we sometimes lose to the, you know, to time, why certain decisions were made, why was the market farmed industrial, why did it get rezoned to add? You know, it may be nothing more than, at the time that was done, it just recognized the existing use of that property, rather than what the long-term potential for that property should be.
I don't have a picture of the map here handy, but as I look at it, it's surrounded by agriculture residential, you know, and so I'm just, in my simple-minded, common-sense thinking, I'm just looking at that and just shaking my head as we're talking about preservation of agriculture, and we're trying to look at all that stuff, and, you know, I'm looking at legitimately our township's most precious, probably our best farmland in our entire township is the light industrial zone right now. And so, that's where, that's where my motive bending is coming from, because I am a property rights person also, but I'm also representative to the entire township and also trying to maintain our farmland. So it's, it is, it's a rough balance, and just trying to figure that out is the big guy.
Cragdewell's advocate. Okay? Where does that all wind up going if the property owner says no?
It still falls off to you, the property owner doesn't have to consent to the reservation. But, I'm getting tired. So, so think about putting it on the agenda for next month, because you can't act on it, or for the next meeting, because you can't act on it tonight.
That's right. That's what I was gonna say, just put it on your old business, continue the conversation.
Anything else? Public comment, if I'm in it for person, for non-agenda items, please come forward, state your name. Okay? I'm requesting executive session after the meeting here, in specific, it's litigation, East Cocalica Township versus Juell Court and Tax Collector. Next meeting will be Thursday, April fourth, at seven PM at the township building. New decisions will be made in executive session, so we will adjourn, I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting. I'll second that. Motion is second, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you.